Good afternoon, everybody. This is Steve. I'm just giving you a quick introduction. I'm going to turn the meeting over to John. The first thing I want everybody to know is we've actually muted all of your lines at this point because what we're going to first start with is a walk-through of the presentation and how to use WebEx. So I'm going to let you turn it over to John in a second to do that. At the end, we will open it up for questions and answers, and we'll go through ways that you can actually access those online through the WebEx. First thing I just want to put out there, you know, I really appreciate all the hard work everybody's been putting in around the COVID response that we have in place. Certainly, I understand some of the stress everybody has related to the challenges in communication amongst all of our entities. We are working through those. We feel that we are very close or almost fully in line on all of the clinical policies at this point. We will still and most likely always will have operational differences between entities. You know, one, we don't have parking garages or parking challenges, and our tents are drive-thru only for certain testing results. So we will have different hours and different things around that. But what we really want to make sure is everyone understands that we are going to be lockstep in line with the system on our clinical decision-making so that we can ensure people who work amongst different entities have the same and similar knowledge. So I'll end my piece here. I'm going to stick around and do a question-answer at the end, but you know, just take a few minutes, any time you get a chance, and try to relax a little bit. This is a very stressful time, and we're still in the ramp-up stages of the COVID outbreak. So hang in there, and if there's anything we can do to help you out and support you, please feel free to reach out. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to John now.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for signing in. A couple of quick things here just to make sure we're operationalizing everything quickly. And please, if you have any, you know, kind of questions or concerns, make sure you, at the end of this, let us know. This is, you know, we're an uncharted territory here as we're kind of, you know, using WebExes, and we have a big group of people on today. It looks like there's probably close to 100 folks on. So thank you once again for all taking your time and signing on. So this is just the first screen that the screen. I'm going to unmute everyone because I want to make sure that, first of all, that you can actually hear us and that you see the screen. So if just one or two people could answer back, that would be great. Then I'm going to mute everyone again. Can you see the screen and hear us okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Hello? Uh-oh. Can you guys hear us okay and see the screen?
Yep, yes.
Okay. All right. All right, thanks. All right. So we're going to get going. So here you can see the screen that just shows if you have a question, how to fill in a question. So at the end, we'll be able to answer some questions that you type in. And if we don't get to your question, we'll make sure we get it written up and sent out answered. It just depends on how many questions we get to. This is going to be just an overview of what we talk about. You know, we're going to do a quick overview of COVID-19, testing, employee health, supplies, screening of staff, you know, no visitors, the alternative care area, the emergency department, our inpatient area, ambulatory outpatient, what's happening there, and kind of the daily briefings, just an overall of what's occurring. Several slides. Joe Tennyson and Dr. Tennyson and Sean Sharma helped, and we presented these to the medical staff yesterday. So I'm going to just kind of present them as well as an overview. This is a slide from John Hopkins University that they have created a dashboard, and anyone is welcome to go there and search it out and see for yourself. And this is a little bit of a drill-down, but as of this morning, this was in the United States, we have, you know, 46,000 foreigner anyone cases of COVID in the U.S., and there's been a total of 593 deaths. And Massachusetts right now has seven deaths. And this dashboard is interesting to watch as, you know, the numbers go very, very quickly. And, you know, last week, the numbers were different, but they update it every day, and it's interesting to watch. This is a slide that Dr. Tennyson created yesterday, and I will speak to just quickly to help folks understand what the case fatality rate is. And that's what, based on kind of some early information and how it was explained, that Korea basically did a lot of testing, and Italy has not had the opportunity to do as much testing, and that's why those two areas are highlighted. But when you really drill down and you look at the number of deaths that are happening in Korea versus Italy, it's because Korea has been able to, had the ability to test so many more people. So it's showing what is most likely a fairly realistic fatality rate related to coronavirus, and that's around 1%. But just to put that in reality, that's 10 times what the seasonal flu is. So it's still very dangerous and not to be taken lightly. Some of the characteristics, and once again, this is coming from, you know, the early data that came out of China. This is another slide that Dr. Tennyson did for us. It talks about the incubation date period being about four days. Illness can last up to 14 days. It shows that 77 to 98% of folks will show up with a fever. It's only present in 44% of the people that end up being hospitalized. The cough, which we've all heard about, 46 to 82% of the patients, being tired, 11 to 52%, and shortness of breath, 3 to 31%. And the scary part of all this is that 20 to 30% of the hospitalized patients need ICU, and of that, you know, 47 to 71% will require mechanical ventilation. This is the stats from the coronavirus DPH dashboard, and everyone has access to this as well. You can just go to the, you know, the DPH and search for coronavirus. These numbers were updated. I took it out this morning, and they updated, I believe, at four o'clock each day. So yesterday in Massachusetts, it had 777 cases, and this is broken down by county. There's a lot more information there if you're interested in to go through, but just to give you a snapshot. And then one more slide to help us understand the extent of what coronavirus can do. And, you know, we can expect between 1 and 20% of the population to contract the disease. You can pick any percent that you'd like in there, but if we were to take 10%, and with seven million people in Massachusetts, that 700,000 will get sick, 140,000 will require hospitalization, 28,000 will require ICU level of care, and then, you know, 12 to 20,000 will require mechanical ventilation. And this is why the social distance isn't so important and making sure they won't get a huge peak in the disease and require, you know, lots and lots of people to the hospital all at the same time, and being able to slow down the disease and really spread it out and the number of folks coming to the hospital. All right. So here, I'm going to go through these, you know, just kind of one at a time, and I'm going to talk to them and just give updates just over the next few minutes. So testing at Marlboro Hospital and the rest of the system has been pretty much unparalleled. Two weeks ago, everyone, you know, it was taking, you know, five to seven days to get a test back. It was taking a really long time. The majority of our tests from Marlboro Hospital were going out to California, so it would take a day to get there, and then we were in queue with lots of other places to get our tests back. We had a handful of tests that we were able to get to the Department of Public Health and get a semi-rapid turnaround time on those. Over the weekend, Marlboro Quest was able to open up, and there's a huge Quest laboratory in the city of Marlboro that now they're online COVID-19 testing. So this has allowed us to, you know, the system and Marlboro Hospital, we're sending all of our lab samples that are done in the hospital, that's an important piece, in the hospital, to Marlboro Quest. So as of Saturday and Sunday, those tests started to turn around much, much, much faster, and they're reading them back 12 to 15 hours, and sometimes even faster. So that's great news because the patients that are getting admitted, you know, they're getting admitted to anywhere, you know, in the hospital here or at other hospitals, that we're now getting results back quickly. So patients aren't, you know, in the hospital for three, four days on full PPE as they remain patients under investigation. So we've had opportunities where patients have been admitted now, and 12 hours later, they're able to get moved off of the precautions. So that rapid testing is key, and so is very important for when healthcare providers have a positive exposure and they are showing signs that we're able to get them tested and get a turnaround time very quickly versus having someone out for five or seven days. At Marlboro Hospital, the samples that are getting done out in the drive-thru screening are getting sent to Missouri, and that is, you know, several-day turnaround time at this point. We're continuing to work on that, and I'm looking for an update later on today on what the true turnaround time will be for that. Employee health, our employee health departments at, you know, here at Marlboro, Health Alliance, and at the Medical Center, they've been working closely together to follow the current DPH guidelines to make sure that we're not keeping people out unnecessarily, to make sure that we're getting people fit tested. And, you know, if you have any exposures, please make sure you call them. If you have any questions, if you've been exposed at home or outside of work, please let them know. We want to make sure that we're keeping you safe and everyone else safe. I'm just going to bounce down to the next slide quickly as we talk about supplies and masks. So everyone's heard, you know, about masks, whether it's on the West Coast or the East Coast or right here in Marlboro. At the system level, we are, you know, want to make sure that we're using as little PPE as necessary, that we're treating, that we're approaching it the correct way. So while there's been some changes in this over the last couple of weeks, that have, some have come from, based on the CDC recommendations, others have come as a system, as we've tried to strategize to make sure that we can maximize our utilization of masks, not to use them up too often and to use them correctly, has been some of the other guidance. So, you know, I'm sorry about some of the confusion and the different, you know, updates and so forth. The latest one was yesterday, and now the entire system is following this procedure for masks. You know, there's masking for Level A patients, masking for Level B patients, and masking, you know, in PPE for Level C patients. The critical point of this one is that what we need to do is conserve the fitted masks for the Level A patients that are providers, our nurses, respiratory, everyone has to, all of the staff that have to go into those rooms and care for those patients or do treatments that are going to require aerosol treatments, is we want to make sure we have masks for the long run for those. So please, please do not use a, you know, a fitted mask that, you know, if you don't need one. Please make sure that you're following the Level B guideline for PPEs. This is crucially important for us to be able to have masks over the long run as we need them for patients and ourselves to keep safe. The other new piece that was done was we did the update on masking all employees. So now, starting today at Marlboro Hospital, everyone that walked in, you had your, you were screened, you had your temperature taken, and you were given a surgical mask to wear throughout the day. So, and that is really because we want to protect ourselves from each other, that if there is an employee that's a source patient, we want to make sure that person has, you know, would have limited opportunity to infect someone else. So that by having us wear a mask, or if I were to be sick, it would prevent other folks from getting sick around me, and having you wear that mask would prevent you from, you know, getting sick as well. So it's really a double duty. So please wear your mask, and if you have any questions, you know, once again, please reach out to your manager, the Marlboro House Command Center on that, and that's the purpose of it. I did touch on the screening of staff. I know that this was day one. We did get some feedback. We're going to continue to look at the best ways to do that. We want to make sure staff isn't getting in late and it's not inconvenient. One of the questions that did come up earlier today to me was, is the lobby of the hospital being used, the waiting room for the emergency department? And what I can say is, 10 days ago, yes, it was, but as of right now, it's not. The volume in our emergency department has dropped by pretty much 50%, close to it. You know, we were seeing 80, 90 patients a day. We're down to about 40 right now. So if and when our emergency department volume picks back up and we need to continue to use, we need to continue to use the, or start, should I say, start using the main hospital lobby again as a waiting room, we will move the entrance for the employees to somewhere else, most likely to Laye. But that's not for, not going to do that now, but just know that there aren't patients that are sick waiting in the hospital lobby as you're going through. We did implement a no visitor policy last week, which seems like weeks ago, as these, as each week has been flying by and so much activity comes, and that is once again to keep everyone here safe and staff, that we don't want anyone coming into the hospital that doesn't need to be here. That holds true for vendors and, you know, visitors. We don't want people that don't have to be here. Let's see, alternative care site. Like, the emergency department, the waiting room of the lobby has been turned into a alternative care site. We have 10 beds downstairs that staff can care for folks. We are, you know, Dr. Tennyson and Sean Cody are talking about no longer having hallway beds to have, not have those patients out of exposure, so we're going to start activating those beds again. They were really for surge capacity, which, as I mentioned, we haven't needed recently, but we will start using those beds again shortly. Inpatient, where are the COVID patients going, where the PUI patients going? They are going to Granger 1 right now. We have, and obviously the ICU as well. The Granger 1 has seven hip bands put in them that allows us to make those rooms negative pressure, and those are getting, you know, vented directly to the outside, and that is a CDC recommendation. And if you were to run out of negative pressure rooms, they can go into a private room. So we're, we did maximize our ability to have negative pressure rooms, and those are where those patients are going. And that's why they get transferred out of, off of Granger 1 when they're, when they test negative for COVID, because we want to make sure that we get that bed empty and we can get ready for the next patient. While the census for COVID patients in the hospital or patients under investigation has, you know, been, you know, under seven most days, including the patients in the ICU, we want to make sure that we always have the next bed available. And in the same kind of statement, we also keep Granger 1 open even if we only have one or two patients down, on it, because we want to be able to have the COVID patients cohort in that area. So lots of great work by folks getting all this figured out and done, and the staff have been excellent, helping us, helping us cut this done. So thank you. From ambulatory outpatient, this has been, you know, a huge change in what we've done. The volume there has basically come to a halt. As of last Monday, we stopped doing all elective surgeries and have stopped the majority of outpatient testing. The only things that are getting done are kind of emergent surgeries or, you know, mammograms where someone has, you know, an obvious lump and they need to have, you know, further testing to make sure that they're okay. So things along those lines. We are working to, you know, to do things like tele-physical therapy and get online to be able to kind of manage our patients during this, as right now, you know, we've canceled it for another week, and we'll be viewing this and getting updates of what the, what the plan is, you know, next week, following week, et cetera. So this is a, it's a continuous process, and we're continuing updating and looking for ways of how to adapt with this. We do have daily briefings every day for the management team with Health Alliance and the city and town officials at 5:00 p.m. each day, or 4:00 p.m. each day, and then at 5:00 p.m., excuse me, is the medical center, the system call that we go on. So not only are we working, you know, at Marlboro Hospital, we're teaming up with Health Alliance, and we're teaming up with the system to make sure that we're doing as many things as possible as the same, because that's when there is some confusion. We want to really limit the confusion amongst what we're doing, particularly for folks that go from campus to campus. So those are the majority of the updates.
So we will also be doing a 6:00 call on Thursday night, the same format, and that way we can catch a wider swath of the staff. And based on the people who called in this week, we will continue to schedule these on a go-forward basis so everybody has a chance to reach out to us and ask any questions that they want to have. I think at this point, we're going to turn it over to the group to do Q and A, and we're going to try to do the written questions first. So if you want to go ahead and submit some, and then if we don't get any there, we'll just open up the lines and go from there.
Right. You can just enter them in the chat section, and you can send them either to everyone so everyone sees the message or to myself. And right now, the only, I just got one, I don't have any questions as of this time, so please. But we will move down on to the questions that have been floating around over the last week or so and answer them. So first question, Steve. What should I do if I was in contact with someone who was positive but I don't have symptoms? So that you should call employee health. So any time that you have a, you know, that you suspect yourself of being in contact with a coronavirus, a COVID patient, make sure you call employee health, and they'll be able to explain to you what we're doing.
We have a question.
All right. Now, let's see.
We have some questions.
Go ahead. Let me, I'll read it to you, Steve, and here we go.
Okay.
So here's the first question. What will we do if we don't have enough beds available for COVID patients?
So we're looking at that as a worst-case scenario. And, you know, at the system in Worcester, we've worked with the city of Worcester to open up the DCU center, and we'll run a field hospital at that site here. We will be looking at other opportunities with the school systems being closed, and if we need to move to that, we will be able to set up alternate sites at the, in their gyms.
Yep. The mayor has reached out to his head at the Marlboro Fire Department. They'll be working with Dr. Tennyson to find a remote site, but that is not something we would, we would want to be staffing.
All right. And Prince, if we get a negative result overnight, do we call infection control right away or in the morning?
So I don't believe we've been calling them overnight. We've been calling them in the morning, as right now, we've had plenty of beds and there's no one waiting in the emergency department. But I will get a formal write-up of that and get that back to you, Prince. But the key piece of that is that we want to make sure that we're getting infectious disease, whoever's on call, called, and making sure that they're the ones taking them off precautions.
All right. And then we have, in radiology, why are the patients from Granger 2 coming down without masks? Example, x-rays, CTs, et cetera.
All right. Because the patients that have been on Granger 2, we have not had a mask policy for every patient that's been getting rolled around. So I would probably have, want to know some more questions if there's a concern about a patient that's coming down. But, you know, certainly folks that we are, that are suspected respiratory patients, that can't happen.
Then we have, patients on Granger 1, aren't they all receiving nebulizers or have we gone to spacer inhalers? Nurses deliver nebs on Granger 1, therefore shouldn't we be wearing N95s while caring for these patients on Granger 1 100% of the time?
So if we're giving nebulizer treatments, those are nebulizers, not MDIs. Nebulizer treatments, those are considered to be aerosol treatment. So yes, we should be wearing fitted masks from those, from what I understand and what we've discussed. We are looking at getting MDIs for those patients, but that's, the MDIs have been very, very hard to get across. Dr. Philip did come back saying we should not be giving nebs to COVID patients. So I know the question around nebs has come up, so once, we, once again, we'll get this kind of frequently asked questions, we'll get the experts and Dr. Sharma to review it and come back on it. Dr. Tennyson, everyone can see his response as well, as only while in the room during nebulization, correct? All right.
Um, which one do you want to go with?
We have a, well, people can keep.
Keep asking questions.
So here we go. Lisa McCabe, who is the director of both the pharmacies at Health Alliance and Memorial here. So I'm going to read Lisa's answer for everyone. So MDIs are stocked and available in Granger 1's Med Service Pixas. Epic LMA's fire upon order, enter to use MDI for high suspicion of COVID positive to conserve supply.
All right. We also have another question. Mary Simpson for UMass Town Hall. They said that they were going to institute the pumps outside the room with extension tubing. Are we planning to do that as well? We are doing that at Health Alliance, so it may be something we have to follow up on here.
No, I had, that's, it's actually an interesting idea. I had not heard about it, so thank you for bringing that up, and that's, we will follow up on that. Thank you.
I hope everyone can understand that's the challenge of multiple facilities doing different things. We're trying to get it all aligned, and we do miss a few things, but we will, there is definitely extension tubing available, and we can do that here.
All right. All right. Next question up, I will ask while people are, oh, we've got another one here. There are many different people reaching out regarding homemade masks. I know Dr. Dixon said we were not accepting them at this time. Is this the same at Marlboro Hospital?
So currently, we have plenty of surgical masks. Obviously, we're on a conservation approach. Everybody's being assigned their own surgical mask as they arrive to the hospital, and they can only get a new one if it's soiled significantly from something. Right now, due to the fact that we have a good, consistent supply of the surgical masks, we are not accepting them because we can't guarantee that they meet the same standards. And as we get down or have a challenge accessing the supply chains to ensure we have enough, homemade masks will be used as a line of last resort. So we do not want to start stocking our shelves, our shelves here and having people start to use them when we currently have a stock of surgical masks.
All right. Thanks, Steve. All right. I'm going to read one off while people are typing. "I heard the state is going to provide daycare for healthcare workers. How do I access that?" And there's, there's been several emails that have gone out about this, and reflections, it's on the hub, and this is, this is true. So if you have not seen that information, and this is something that affects you, please send an email to the Marlboro Hospital Command Center, it's MH Command Center, and we'll be sure to get right back to you.
So this is always another one. What is the plan for staff who don't have work to do? We don't have a final answer yet. This is going to be a system decision across every entity, and it is supposed to come out today. So I'm waiting to hear from Dr. Dixon's office when his communication is ready to go. Right now, you know, I can just put it out there that we're guaranteeing to pay people for a period of time, no matter what the issue is. I don't know what the formats will be, but we will know shortly. And I do think it will be at the, well-received by most people in the organization, if not all people in the organization.
Okay. Thank you for that, Steve. All right. I'm going to go to the next page of questions. And so testing, I asked, I did talk about testing, so unless there's a specific question about the testing, and please write about it. How accurate is the test? Dr. Tennyson, can maybe you can respond to the group? I know you talked about that yesterday to the medical staff, and we can go ahead and read that out.
You want to open up his line? Hold on, Joe. We have to open up your line first.
Um, so.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. Yep.
Okay. So I don't have the exact data. Dr. Sharma spoke a bit about it yesterday, but so far as we know, it's somewhere in the order of 80-plus percent sensitive, which means that of positive people tested, we would miss somewhere between 10 and 20%. And we're learning more, the test is a PCR test, which means it tests for the genetic material of the virus. There are other tests like the, if those remember the rapid flu, which are antibody-based tests. We expect those to be much less sensitive, but there was a lot of talk about that in the president's press conference last night. So the short answer is, as far as we know, somewhere north of 80% sensitive, but we're not exactly sure yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that answer, Joe. I appreciate it.
So we have two questions. One is related to N95s first. I'm going to let John answer that one, and then I'll go back and answer the one from Jess.
All right. So, the, sorry, can I ask someone, can I ask something to clarify the homemade mask? Whoop, I read that one, sorry. "Wondering what mask to wear in a negative pressure room? N95 or non-fitted Gerson or Wilson?" So I'm going to refer you back to the, to the slide, or do they, you know, there was slides two ago that was talking about the new levels of precaution, Level A, A, B, and C. That one should explain to you when that you, what mask you need to wear depending on the level of what you're doing for the patient. So if it's a high-risk aerosol treatment, it would be a, you know, a fitted mask. If it's not, then it's the unfitted Gerson, or unfitted masks, and depending on what mask you wore before that, whether it would be the Gerson or the Wilson. And does that make sense? I know the mask thing can be a little confusing, but we are going to spend some more time today going out and around, talking to folks about this and having conversations here at the hospital to sort through it, because this is, this was a, this was a big change. All right.
So on the float pool, are we going to float to all departments? So we are currently in discussion with all of our unions across the system to clarify this. In the short term, everybody who has put on the Marlboro Hospital float pool can and will be floated amongst the departments here. What we're working on is actually a system-wide float pool where we have the opportunity to float people to the higher-volume surge areas, if it's Worcester or Health Alliance or Marlboro, depending on who gets it first and who has the most important need. The state has actually approved us doing that without having to get physicians revalidated or practitioners across the board. So we are able to do that in an emergency case only. As for staff, we're able to move them, but we'll be moving them to ideally their similar job or something below their level to make sure that we are meeting the standards. We'll get more information on that in the short term, and it will go out over the next day or so.
All right. Let's see. We talked about masks and negative pressure room. So let me, here's, I think I'm up to date here. According to recent emails from So, let me, here's, I think I'm up to date here. According to recent emails from Dr. Dixon, we are to limit CNA's inter rooms to COVID ruleouts on Granger One. This poses a challenge. Are we following this recommendation? If so, how are we adjusting for nurse-patient ratios? So, what we're doing is we're, right now, we haven't had a lot of patients, I'll, I'll be honest with you. So, it should be fairly manageable, but, uh, certainly here, we're, we're paying attention to, you know, what we have for staffing. It's two or three nurses or CNA. We're trying to limit the amount of people that are going into patients, uh, that are, you know, either patients that are investigation or COVID positive. That's true in the emergency department. That's true in the ICU. It doesn't mean they can't ever go in there, but i- if, right now, you know, we basically had, you know, two or three patients and two or three nurses on the unit. So, it shouldn't be an issue, but we're, we'll be, we are talking about it and the goal is to keep people safe and limit exposures that, that we don't, that we don't need to. Certainly, if there is a clinical need where more than one person needs to be in there, uh, obviously, the, the, they should, you know, you should be getting the help in that you, you need for that, to care for that patient.
So, we had a, uh, private question come in about everybody wearing masks, whether or not that is an option. It is not an option. Everybody who arrives to the hospital will be assigned a surgical mask, whether you're in housekeeping, administration, nursing, any role here in the hospital, and it is not an option to not wear it. Uh, if you are unwilling to wear it, you will be asked to be sent home and that will be on your own private, um, paid time off.
And the important part of that is that it's about keeping everyone safe. We don't want you to get infected and we don't want other staff members to get infected. So, it is a change and we appreciate everyone working with us on that. All right. Another question. Let me, at University Memorial, they are building a pool of providers to help with the surge of patients come in and things get tight. Do we have a listed pool of providers that have offered or willing to help out at our hospital medical staff if needed?
So, uh, this is from Dr. Kerswio. Um, the biggest piece here is the majority of these physicians are through the medical group and the medical group is preparing those, uh, float pools themselves. We're only preparing the float pool for the hospital staff here that's, uh, on our employee role. Uh, so if you, you should reach out to Michelle Streeter and she is working on that and I know they have the plans in place. Uh, there is a question from Heidi around homemade masks. Uh, yes, they should remove the homemade mask and be issued a hospital mask immediately until our supplies run out.
Right. And I, I just want to be, you know, kind of reiterate what Steve is saying here is that we, they can't even wear a homemade mask over a, a surgical mask at this time. Right now, we are sticking to our, our PPE that's sent out of the system and we don't want anyone deviating from that. And, uh, I appreciate the homemade mask thing. I know all the work, but all personal homemade masks need to be removed and not used at this time. Thank you. Uh, we're on the daily call. Let's see. Oh, that-
That was just an answer from Charlie. We just scanned a patient with a homemade mask. Well, that's interesting.
So, that's something we haven't talked about yet, a patient coming in wearing a homemade mask. Uh-
We should be remasking.
I feel like I want to answer that, but I'm not going to answer it right away, but, uh-
We'll get an answer out here on that one. We do feel that they should be remasked, but we want to make sure through infection control, um, they're, they're, that's what they want us to do that.
And why, may, if, maybe if it was something that came with knee pain and didn't need a mask, um, I don't know. So, we'll, we'll, we'll get that one. Thanks for the, thanks for the question. All right. Uh, we can go through a few more of the slides here. I know that, uh, we've answered a lot of questions. We'll, we'll-
We are supposed to use one and 95 per hand per shift.
Correct. It, uh, I would, once again, this is not as straightforward as, uh, a simple yes. Please refer to the PPE because, uh, what came out yesterday, because not everyone is wearing N95. You know, they can be, or depending on the kind, unless we're referring to N95 as this, as the type of mask. But yes, if, if you were going into a room and you need to wear a fitted mask, yes, it would be one per shift unless something happened and you weren't able to continue to wear it. But, you know, please look at the, the, you know, the Level A, B, and C, uh, protection guideline PPE that came out, uh, yesterday.
Do you want to open the phone lines, maybe?
So, uh, the, I have a couple more we, we can, or you can do these questions up to-
Oh, yeah, let's do these ones. These are good.
Um, so here's a question that, uh, came out. How do you know if you have a cold or COVID? Uh, and that is a, that is a good question. So, the, kind of the, the signs and symptoms, you know, are certainly all over the internet, but, you know, it's cough, sore throat, fever, malaise, uh, nuance at cough. Uh, if you have any concern, if you're sick at all, please call Employee Health. Uh, there, you may not know if you have the difference or a cold or COVID, um, without getting, being tested, but you may not, you certainly don't need a test just because you have a, a cold. Please reach out to Employee Health if you feel that you are, if you're sick, so they know. And certainly, you can certainly call your own provider and, and get that, uh, followed up on your, on your own as well from, as needed. How many potential COVID patients do we have in the ICU? Uh, believe, uh, we have, uh-
One confirmed.
One confirmed and I, I, maybe one other. I'm not sure at this very moment. I can't remember. But, uh, one confirmed and one, one possible at this moment.
And over the next day or so, we will be sending out a morning update to let people know the status of the hospital, uh, with the numbers throughout the, the, the facility so everybody knows where, what our current status is.
And then the next question, after someone tests positive, when they can come back to work? Uh, that's, that's continuing, I, well, that's continued to change, but I, I would ask to reach out to Employee Health on that question. Um, it, and I don't, yeah, I don't want to, I'm just going to provide wrong information, so I'm not going to, I'll stop talking there, but we can certainly get, uh, better follow-up on that question. And what do I do if someone is sick in my house? Once again, uh, call Employee Health, please. That's as- All right.
Uh, so there's a question that came in. Uh, we'll be currently treating our positive inpatient with hydroxychloroquine and azithro. Um, I'm not going, I'm not, I'm not a clinician, so I would actually probably refer that back to Viva.
Uh, or, yeah, Lisa McCabe or Dr. Robinson's on the phone. Yeah, you can. All right. Uh, Dr. Tennyson, I can find you quickly. Do you happen to know the answer to that?
Uh, I don't, um, because most of that treatment decision is done post-admission. So, we have not been doing it in the ED. I do not know the, um, the evidence for those. So, I would leave that to Dr. Sharma or Dr. Robinson.
All right. I'll unmute everyone just, because I, there's too many people for me to kind of look through, but everyone's going to be unmuted, so you've been warned. Dr. Robinson or anyone else?
Hi, it's Lisa McCabe. Um, I can tell you that there is, um, limited data on the treatments around COVID-19. There has been shown some utility of hydroxychloroquine, um, and we have used that, um, but there's still limited data and we're also working to try to get, uh, medication for compassionate use.
Okay. And the system's, uh, forming a standardized methodology.
All right. Thank you for that, Lisa. So, uh, lots of questions on, uh, PPE. Uh, we, you know, the, how we're going to prevent running out from PPE is, is, you know, kind of the guidelines that have been sent out, making sure that we're all following them and making sure that, you know, we're keeping good control of them, that we're not hoarding and, and they're using it correctly. Uh, there are no longer different guidelines at different hospitals. We have now gotten alignment, uh, to, and so that, that issue no longer exists. Um, are surgical or masks as safe as respirator masks? I don't, uh, surgical mask is safe as respirator mask. Surgical masks, uh, well, they, they do different, they do different things, so I don't want to say one's safer or unsafe, but, not safe, but, uh, we should be using them as, as we've instructed and once again, follow the, the PPE guideline. Are we considering cotton masks for low-exposure procedure areas? At this time, we're using the surgical mask that, that we purchase and not, you know, homemade or, or other items. Uh, are we doing anything to change the workflows for nurses and clinicians to reduce the, the PPE?
We need to review because we can't use some of that.
Yeah. And that, I think, has already occurred quite honestly as, as we've been realizing that the, there's lots of work being done around, uh, uh, PPE and, and the time constraint around that. We got a couple of questions here. Let's see, at least, uh, one. At the Department of Medicine meeting at UMass from noon, noon today, Dr. Feinberg mentioned that he thought the chlorine data was not very compelling, but they are looking at that on a case-by-case basis. All right. So, we have, uh, one more page of questions that we can go through and anything else, if anyone wants to write up, you can send to us and otherwise we'll, uh, we can finish up. But here are the last few questions that I had are frequently asked questions. Are you concerned about not having enough ICU rooms or ventilators? Uh, absolutely. Um, at, you know, at this time, we, we do have enough. The system has gone out and rented ventilators as well. Uh, I have been insured by Dr. Carlson and, and Justin, uh, as well for the medical center that, uh, we're going to function as a system and if we need a ventilator, that there will be a ventilator here for us and that, you know, that no one will have ventilators at one hospital or another and having someone need one, uh, that we will share equipment as needed. Uh, we are starting to look for alternative ICU care, uh, inside the hospital, um, whether that's the, you know, the PACU or what can be done upstairs and, you know, is it opportunity in Granger One? Uh, but there's, there's lots of monitoring and, and equipment that goes along with needing an ICU bed. So, we are looking at where else we could be able to provide ICU-level care in the hospital. Uh, can we refurbish old ventilators? Uh, Joe Wagner, who heads BioMed up for the system, is, you know, kind of been actively involved and, and doing everything to kind of maximize the current ventilators we have, as a, as I said, getting their hands on, on some other ones. Uh, what's the difference between all the tents? Uh, the tents, uh, there's, so each hospital have, there's testing tents and at, at the medical center, they also have a test that, a tent that's part of their, their emergency department-
Surge.
Uh, for, for surge capacity.
Some are green, some are blue, and some are white, so there's also a difference there.
Yes.
So, we have another question that came in about patients coming to the ER with a sore throat or cough. Are they all tested? How soon after coming into contact with a positive patient will the test be positive? And can there be a false negative if the swab is done too soon? I think we already answered the last part is their accuracy of the test from Dr. Tennyson being about 84%. Do you have answers on that?
Joe, I can unmute you and you can certainly talk from any of you. I'm hoping not putting you on your heard.
For the time being, and we're following Department of Public Health guidance on who gets tested. We test only symptomatic people and only those that meet the requirements of the eight criteria set forth by the DPH, um, I guess a week and a half ago now. Um, so essentially, it, healthcare workers who are symptomatic get tested, people with known high contacts, um, people with known high-risk travel. And then at the bottom, there's the one category that sort of gives us a catch-all and that's people who have any other medical indication that it would be important to know the test, the results. And those are the ones we're looking at who have the high-risk comorbidities like, um, COPD, heart disease, um, renal failure. Those are the big three. Asthma's in there too. Diabetes, a little bit less, but also in there. Um, but those are the ones, when people have those things or are over 65, we tend to test them. If it's a 20-year-old with no comorbidities, uh, who comes in and has no known contact, but just happens to be sick, they're likely not going to be tested. Uh, as to how soon the test turns positive after an exposure, we have no idea, which is why we're not testing asymptomatic individuals because we have no idea where in that incubation course do you start having a positive test.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Tennyson, for that. Uh, another question here. Uh, so, yes, the, the request for the email and the, the data. So, I will, uh, we've, I've recorded this presentation and the slides and the questions and so forth. So, um, if I manage to successfully save it, which is probably 50/50, when I, I will, our goal is to get it up on the hub so that people can access it and read the questions and, uh, have access to the slides and everything else because we do want to be able to, to share the information. Um, and certainly, I, if anyone wants the slides, you can just, uh, email the Command Center. We can, you know, Marlboro Hospital Command Center, we can email you the, the slides if that's just what you're, you're looking for. That's, that's simple to do.
So, I think we're going to open up the lines for any other questions that might come up since we don't have any more, uh, that have been submitted. Otherwise, if you don't have any questions, feel free to either stay on or drop off the line, but we'll have another, uh, presentation on Thursday night around six. So, the lines are now open.
Hey, John and Steve, it's Mike Peruta. I just wanted to say, if everyone who has a question on childcare, if they go to the hub, the very top of the hub says learn more about coronavirus, you click on that and then you can open up the childcare button right below that and you'll see that we've worked with childcare providers in the state and there's about 550 slots open for emergency childcare for those people who work in hospitals and healthcare. So, just steer your staff or anyone who asks questions to that site. You call, you talk to them and they do an intake and then they match your childcare needs with the available childcare supply. So, I think it's a pretty good, uh, tool for our employees to just handle it on their own, uh, by placing, uh, their children in these sites.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Got any questions that, uh, we can answer for you?
Hello? Hello? Hello, I have a question over here.
Uh, yes, you're really going to have to speak up. That's, uh, a little bit of a problem we have without muting it. So, try to, uh, just speak way up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I have a question here, uh, from the Trevor Services Department, um, about UV lights. Uh, is any, um, that, can we use UV lights for, uh, or affects the, the, uh, the virus?
So, the question is, can we use UV lights and how it affects the virus? So, yes, we do use UV lights in some instances to clean the rooms. You've done that. We can't use it every time because it's, it's very time-consuming and there's other ways to get, uh, totally clean without the UV lights. We are, uh, trialing today, along with, uh, the, the other campuses, uh, UV-ing masks to see if they can, and how successful that is, successful that is so we can start reusing, uh, masks. And those masks would be the, you know, the, your mask that you would then be able to use the next day, but we're, we're just in the process of, of figuring that piece out.
Question?
Go ahead.
Huh? I think we should put a question in about the air quality in CT. Huh? No.
Internet, do you have a question? We can hear you.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, my God, they can't hear me. No.
All right. I heard you mentioned CT's air quality. We are having some questions about, so, we should have-
Yeah. We were going to type the question, but I guess, yeah, what is the air quality in CT? The, the people came in here yesterday and told us that we don't have circulating air in there. So, is that safe?
So, but, yeah, Paul, are you on the, on the line? I can answer this or you can answer it out?
I can answer that. It's Paul.
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Mike Williams, Mike is researching our options. There is, the fact that we have this air circulate, this scan room, uh, meaning that it goes up-
What is that?
Can somebody mute, Internet? Can you mute your phone?
I think it's tough, Paul. You know, maybe we could just send out, maybe you could talk to them and we can send it out. I, I think it's really hard, uh, for folks to be able to hear with every, without this. And this was kind of our experiment to see how it would, how it would work if we took everyone off mute. So, I think typing the question's the best way. But to answer the CT question, we, we did, we are been in discussions and we are looking at the number of airflow and we're looking at what, you know, what we can put in to, uh, help, help clean the air a little bit. But no, that we don't consider the room, uh, to be unsafe. But, uh, Paul, infection control, myself, head of facilities, met on it yesterday and we're, we're seeing what other, other things we could do to improve the air quality in there. Uh, but certainly Paul can address this on a, a, uh, much more depth level with the CT, uh, uh, department. Thank you. What is the email address for the Marlboro Hospital Command Center? If you go in and you search, uh, it's MH Command Center. That's one of the questions. What's the address for the Marlboro Hospital Command Center? So, MH Command Center. All right. We're going to give another minute here and if I don't see any more questions, we'll, uh, we will, we'll log off.
All right. All right, everybody. Have a great day. Thank you for all your hard work.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We're going to end the call. I appreciate everyone's, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, we're going to end the call, I appreciate everyone's, thank you.